Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, let's begin with the approval of minutes from our November 4th meeting. Commissioners, any notes, objections, corrections pertaining to the minutes from that meeting? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the November 4th meetings?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion made by Vine, second?
Second.
Second by Kim. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, great, thank you so much. All right, before we get rolling, I'd like to solicit any comments from the public on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Obviously pertaining to the agenda, you'll have plenty of opportunities to speak on any item as well, but anything that's not on the agenda. Before we get rolling, I'd like to say a few words. So today marks our last meeting of 2024, and that's significant, not just because this is the close of our year, but it's because this will be the last meeting for one of our commissioners. So in my view, and I'm sure that's shared by all the others, in the context of the Radnor Planning Commission, there's probably no higher honor than to serve out two full terms on this body, and that's exactly what Commissioner Matt Golis has done. But rather than just part ways with Matt and give him a hearty round of applause and a pat on the back for a job well done, I would like to tell you who we're losing tonight. And this is a gentleman who's essentially dedicated his entire life to serving the public. So Matt, I'm going to walk you through his career real briefly. He began his career in the news business, in the days when we could actually trust the press, and he brought the kind of journalism that was free of stage sensationalism and the bias that is present today. He started meekly as a copy boy at The Washington Star. He rose through the ranks to copy editor, then staff writer in the sports department, and he worked with such luminaries of journalism such as Michael Issikoff, Howard Kurtz, and Maureen Dowd. After The Washington Star closed, he transitioned to The Dallas Morning News and The Hartford Courant before settling in for a 20-year career at The Philadelphia Inquirer. There, he served as the Delaware County Editor, Deputy Sports Editor, New Jersey Editor, and finally Metro Editor. I hope I'm getting this right, Matt.
Perfect.
After his career, The Inquirer concluded he was named as the Executive Vice President and Editor of the Wilkes-Barre Times Leader in 2005, where he served for over a year before returning back to his newfound home in Philadelphia where he started Plan Philly. And this was a first of its kind, and I don't think it's matched today anywhere. It's a website-based news organization created to cover Philadelphia's planning and zoning process. And most importantly, not just to cover it, but to spur discussion on how Philadelphia should grow as a city. And in the nine years that he served there, the website became a must-read for developers, citizens, and government officials alike. And that's because the transparency it provided. In the arcane zoning code and development process in Philadelphia, this website is credited with beginning an effort to rewrite Philadelphia's 50-year zoning code amongst other things. So in January of 2017, after transitioning Plan Philly to WHYY, Matt began the next phase of his public service journey, and he joined the Radnor Planning Commission. During his two terms of service here, he served as Vice Chair, Chair, and as a liaison to the Shade Tree Commissioner role that he really helped define. It's unprecedented what he did there. And I don't want to speak for Seth Reiser, the Shade Tree Chair, but I know that Shade Tree, just like the Planning Commission, will also miss him. And I think tree inspections have never been better than they've been under your watch. So if you can, tonight, just join me in a round of applause congratulating Matt for his service to Radnor, as well as our request to rejoin the Planning Commission after your one-year waiting period expires. You know, I planned this a little bit differently. I was going to have an after-meeting party for Matt, but that would have violated Sunshine Act on at least three other bodies, so there'll be none of that. But thanks for listening and thanks for congratulating Matt for his eight years of service to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the agenda. So Application 213-220-3 Metta Crest Road, land development.
Evening. Nick Canelia representing 3 Metta Crest Road owner, and we will request that that be tabled, and I will send the appropriate extension letter to the township.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Canelia. Let's, in our usual fashion, vote on it. I'd like to make a motion to table 3 Metta Crest Road, Application 213-220. Can I get a second? Second by Kunda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up, Application 213-066, 245 South Bryn Mawr Avenue, land development. So this application's considered to be a minor subdivision, so they're looking for our recommendation tonight for both preliminary and final land development approval. So there's a couple of waivers. Let's speak to the first one. So 255-dash-27-i5, this is as per our Radnor Code. In general, no private driveway shall take access to an arterial or major collector street. Driveways shall be so located as to provide a reasonable site distance at street intersections. And I note for the record that there is an existing driveway there. So, and there's, I believe there's no other access to outside of this property.
That's correct. The only front the property has is on Bryn Mawr Avenue, so we really don't have a choice but to put a driveway there.
Got it. Okay, and the second waiver is 255-dash-27-i7. No common driveway shall provide access to more than three lots or three single-family dwellings. Can you?
I can. So if Chuck Dopsen, Inland Design, and with me is Mike Zapatelli, the applicant, we actually had this discussion briefly in November, and when we looked at the section in question, we really found that it doesn't apply to this property because, and I'll see if I can't pull up the exact wording here. Yes, so the applicant talks about a common driveway to provide access to more than three lots or three single-family dwellings. So upon closer evaluation, so basically we have a single lot, and we don't have any single-family dwellings, because the zoning ordinance actually defines a single-family dwelling as a dwelling on its own lot, and I actually pulled the section of the code here. Dwelling, single-family, in the definitions, is a building on a lot designed and occupied exclusively as a residence for one family. So we didn't really feel that that was necessarily applicable in this instance, so I thought it was certainly worth having a discussion with the Planning Commission, and maybe if Mr. Phillips or Mr. Norsini wants to chime in, then we could have their input on it as well.
Sure, let's do that. Mr. Phillips?
I would defer to the solicitor on that interpretation.
Peter?
Although the zoning ordinance defines this, this is a SALDO requirement, so it says "single-family," it doesn't say detached "single-family," so it applies to all single-family dwellings as opposed to a multifamily dwelling, which is basically apartments, and that's not this.
Okay. With due respect, the ordinance, the SALDO, doesn't actually, has no definitions for common driveway or for dwelling, single-family, whatnot, so I basically deferred to the zoning. And it's not, in my experience, unusual to sometimes have to cross-reference the definitions in the various codes, because one might not be totally complete, whether it's an oversight or done on purpose, I'm not sure. But, you know, when we looked at the fact that it is defined in the zoning code, although this is a SALDO, we felt that it was probably not applicable here, but I recognize that it's certain something we can have discussion on. If it's decided that it does apply, then I would simply say that we're probably going to ask for that waiver again, simply because we only have frontage on Bryn Mawr Avenue, and to put multiple driveways on Bryn Mawr Avenue would be something I'm sure PNDOT would not approve, and we felt it was a reasonable request.
Sure, and I think to your point, if you are requesting a four-single-family home development, you know, we would actually have to look at that waiver, which you are under this plan. Can you talk to us, and I'm referencing the Gilmore and Associates' letter of November 18th. So this is page 2 under SALDO. Talk to us about the required site distance of 600 feet and the vegetation that exists there.
Certainly. So we went last week, before Thanksgiving, and looked at the site distance at the existing driveway, which is going to be the same location as the proposed driveway. And our engineers took an evaluation of it. There is ample site distance in excess of 600 feet in both directions. There is one tree that currently is in the way, but that actually is on the property we're developing, and that can be eliminated, and that represents, in our estimation, the only site distance obstruction that would be for that driveway.
Okay. If we were to consider the waiver of, you know, I understand your position, of no common driveway shall provide access to more than three lots or three single-family homes. Can you tell us why the Planning Commission should recommend granting that waiver?
Yeah, I can, I think. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, this page is new to the plan set we recently submitted, and basically what it is, it's an aerial context plan that shows the property with a radius of 500 feet around the perimeter of the property. So I note that on an adjoining property to the rear of our subject, the one that's subject to this application, we have a total of five attached townhouse units that access off of Moore Avenue with a single driveway, and it looks like they have two overflow spaces. So, you know, I think that relative to the current uses there today, you know, there's an office building with a variety of uses in it, you've got a fairly large parking lot, so you have traffic there. So from a traffic impact perspective, it's our feeling that anything generated by the four townhouse units would be equal to or less than what's currently being used today. So I think in that perspective, and on behalf of my client, because, you know, the zoning basically says that we can get the four units in accordance with the R5 district standards, we thought it was a reasonable request because, you know, it's what's allowed by zoning. And again, having multiple driveways onto this property is something that I don't believe that PNDOT would ever approve, just because of its limited frontage on Bryn Mawr Avenue.
Okay, got it. Commissioners, what questions do you have?
So just going back to what you just said.
Yeah.
With regard to the traffic.
Yeah.
So your idea is that it's going to be less traffic, but are you considering the timing of day as to the traffic? So with houses, people are going to come and go at the peak time, you know, in the morning, in the afternoon, evening? As opposed to what's there right now, which is more people coming and going during the day?
Correct. So we haven't done an analysis to the impact of what the peak hour impacts would be. I was talking basically overall on a day-to-day basis. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, but you do see the impact of the peak hours?
Potentially. I mean, we could certainly have trip generations, you know, count analysis done to see, you know, what's there today and compare it to what four attached units would generate. I'm just really speaking, in my experience from 30 years, that, you know, four attached residential units compared to, oops, excuse me, an office building of this size is probably going to have less traffic impact overall. And again, like I said, if we had more frontage on Bryn Mawr Avenue and could afford maybe another access point, we would do it. But I'm pretty sure that because of the limited frontage we have on Bryn Mawr Avenue, with the fact that it is a state road and PNDOT's going to require a permit for that, we would never be able to get a second access permitted, so.
I have to agree with the applicant about traffic being materially less with the residential use compared to a medical use.
Thank you.
So normally, the Planning Commission leans heavily into the code, and we certainly have a very robust code here. I am curious, though. One of the things that we can consider is how this proposed development fits in the existing neighborhood. Could you comment on the three houses to the left of, actually, four homes to the left, to the right of that plan? What are they, and what is the use? As opposed to the proposed use?
I think Mike's very familiar with the property, it's daily operation, so I'm sure he can answer it better.
Yep, yeah, those three, as well as the one to the left of that as well.
Right there. So I think it's with this, one, two, three.
I believe these are. Here. I believe these are single-family homes, and right next to here is considered an apartment structure.
Okay, got it. I think the one comment that I remember from, and I think it was Commissioner Kim, is that, and I don't know if he framed it exactly this way, but there is a question of how the proposed development really fits that neighborhood. I understand you're downzoning the lot as well as the property, and you're removing lots of parking spaces, you're removing impervious, and that sounds great on paper. It just doesn't look like this would fit the existing neighborhood. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, certainly. Well, I think if you look at the context plan, and to the left on the paper, you've got, you know, a fairly large apartment complex. Immediately to the back, you've got almost an exact, it's a configuration of five townhouse units, which is configured, you know, largely the same as what the proposal is. And Mike, on this property here to the right, you said that, is this a commercial operation still, or is this residential?
Residential.
That's, I'm sorry?
Residential.
And residential meaning apartments?
Yes.
So in that context, you've got, you know, multifamily behind, you've got multifamily to the west, you've got multifamily directly to the east, so it would seem that in the context of the neighborhood, it actually fits in pretty well, because the uses are very similar to what's already around there.
I'd also like to say that it, I think, because it passed muster with Shade Tree.
It did, yes.
I think it has, this development has, will have a tendency to soften an otherwise hard landscape, I think, because you guys are putting in more trees than you're required to.
Yes.
And the choice of trees was good, and so, at least I think from the Shade Tree perspective, this will enhance the other, this will enhance the property and the properties around it.
I agree, and thank you for that, because I know that our in-house RLA went to the Shade Tree Commission, had a good conversation with them, and they seemed well pleased with the planting program proposed for the project.
Can you discuss the plans for the sidewalk?
So the current access off of Bryn Mawr Avenue is just your basic driveway. It doesn't, it's not been improved to allow ADA access, so the driveway will be widened and reconfigured to provide ADA access, and replacing sidewalk where necessary near the transitions. And then we have a four-foot-wide sidewalk that basically connects the main parking area to that. So anybody, any of the residents who decided that they wanted to get to Bryn Mawr Avenue sidewalk can do so without having to actually walk on the driveway itself.
What's there now in front of the, in front of the property on Bryn Mawr Avenue? My concern is, and I can't picture it, I drive it every day, but obviously there's folks that walk up to the hospital, to the train station along that side from Rad, from the Radwin Apartments, so I just think about the safety.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. So currently, there is no sidewalk that connects the building to the sidewalk on Bryn Mawr Avenue. Everybody who, anybody who wants to get down, they're just going to have to use the driveway as it is. So we will actually be enhancing that and providing that to separate the in and outgoing traffic from the site versus pedestrian traffic who want to get down to Bryn Mawr Avenue.
But in front, along, parallel to Bryn Mawr Avenue, you will be putting a?
Well, there's sidewalk there now.
Okay.
Yeah, there's sidewalk there now. We'll replace a little bit as necessary, but we will have another sidewalk that will connect to that and give access to the residents to South Bryn Mawr Avenue.
And it's all contiguous from Radwin all the way up to the train station, or Wawa, the bridge on the right-hand side?
Yeah, actually, yeah, I believe it is. I'm not sure if this aerial shot will show it to us or not.
But at least in front of the property, the portion of that.
Yeah.
That you control, there will be a sidewalk, or there is a sidewalk.
Yeah, and it looks like there's contiguous sidewalk all along the south side of Bryn Mawr Avenue, up at least until the railroad crossing, so I think, yeah, there should be good connectivity there.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Did you consider any kind of plan to keep the building and change it into apartments?
Mike, you want to answer that?
No, the building needs full rehab. I've done an extensive amount of walkthroughs, planning, sorry, walkthroughs and planning within the building, and how it sits there and how to bring the generation into the township, it seems to be that townhomes would be more beneficial there, single-family.
So personally, I don't think this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. These are, there's nice houses, you know, that front Bryn Mawr Avenue, and I think it'd be a shame to lose this one. And I don't think that squeezing in four townhouses would be a benefit to the township here.
So my thought here, just to echo on what the Vice Chair stated, and I see your point regarding the, is it five or is it four townhomes below, not your plan, but that far?
Five.
Five. Yeah. I see your point, definitely want to grant you that. I think the situation there is a little different, because those are shielded from the road, the road, there's a certain frontage that's happening on Bryn Mawr Ave with respect to your particular property and the ones to the right, and it just does not seem in keeping with what we're looking at. And the situation with the other five townhomes is a little different. They're not fronting on Bryn Mawr Ave, there's a side street, it's a little bit more residential. This, to me, you know, you're adjoining PI, you are existing non-conforming with R5, within R5 right now. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to reduce the non-conformity. You know, I guess that, it just does not seem to me like the right way. Commissioners, any other comments?
I mean, I'll reiterate my comment from the last session, which was, I think these homes would be very marketable to families with young children, and at this time, there are no kids on the site today as a medical office building, but I'm concerned that there would be a lot of young children, and their immediate inclination would be to go out into the sidewalk and go to Wawa or go find a park somewhere, unless that type of recreational asset is provided on-site, in a somehow enclosed or safe way, just that is my concern. Because Bryn Mawr Avenue is just, it's, cars barreling through very fast, there isn't a verge, there's no reason for cars to slow down. The sidewalk is right next to the curb, I think. No trees. So that continues to be my concern.
Well, I think, I do recall you making that comment last time, and I think, I don't know that I would go out and necessarily assume that people who would live in these residences wouldn't keep close tabs on their children. Now granted, young children are sometimes, they're want to go wandering away. I know we talked about some sort of physical barrier that would prevent the children from actually gaining access to the sidewalk there. There may be a vegetative solution to, you know, basically discourage young kids from actually getting there, which we'd, you know, we would probably try to blend it in with maybe behind the shade trees here, just so that there was more of a physical barrier that the kids couldn't get past. To the extent it had to be some sort of, you know, small fence, three and a half, four-foot-high ornamental behind there, I think we could consider that as well. But regardless of what we try to do there, the driveway, it does need to be installed at some point, and it does represent an opportunity for anybody to gain access to Bryn Mawr Avenue. So I don't know that there's a perfect solution there, but we'll certainly do what we can to make it the best possible solution for that particular concern.
I just think from a market standpoint, you know, if you, I think your idea or your comment is very valid, but I think, I would think whoever wants to live there, chances are they may want, they may work at the hospital.
Well, that's it, and I don't, I mean, you never know who's actually going to live there.
Yep.
But I think the target market for this is probably going to be, you know, professional couples, probably without children.
I would agree, and the folks, they would, the market would say, you know what, it's not, it's not the perfect place for kids.
Right.
I'll opt somewhere else.
Agreed. And that was what Mr. Zapatelli had thought about it as well.
Commissioners, any other comments?
There's no on-street parking on Bryn Mawr Avenue.
There is not.
And I go back to my comments from last month, that I wish you had more guest spaces, especially if there's no parking on Bryn Mawr Avenue.
Yeah, so there's a total of eight spaces required, two per unit right now, and we have a total of 18 spaces. So we have two garage spaces, and then two fully functional spaces outside the doorways of each unit, and then we have the two overflow spaces. If we were able to maintain the same impervious coverage level that's there now, which is in excess of 40%, actually it's excess of 44%, we could probably accommodate that pretty easily, but for us to just go ahead and assume that the township would be okay with that, you know, I mean, it does meet the code requirement, recognizing that any multifamily dwelling development, you know, overflow parking is always a good thing, so we've tried to maximize that to the greatest extent we can while staying within the confines of the other requirements that we have to in the zoning ordinance.
And did you work out your one issue in the retention basin about, not impervious fabric, the fabric liner? You proposed not to have a bottom of the basin, and I think Roger proposed that you should.
Yeah, so typically, and actually, thank you, Mr. Kunda, that question was actually asked in November, and what I didn't realize was that this property's actually in two different watersheds that have different rate reduction requirements, so that's kind of why we have the two systems there. Relative to the fabric, it would be under this bed here. In our experience, putting geotextile on the bottom of an infiltration facility tends to cause that facility to clog with fines and dust and things faster than six inches of open graded asphalt number 57. So that's what we typically like to see. We're not going to take it to the mat, though. Some townships are, they're open to the idea, some townships simply say, no, put the fabric in, in which case we say, that's fine, we'll put the fabric in. So, you know, we'll do whatever the code requires, and, you know, if Mr. Phillips, upon his review of this recent submission, which I know he hasn't yet to do yet, feels that that's a good idea, then we'll do whatever Mr. Phillips wants.
Any other comments? All right, let's, oh yeah, the Fleming Letter of November 22nd, page 2, on zoning. And I know this is a revision of a table. Did you take a look at that? They, they asked to revise the impervious area to include the impervious area of a right-of-way?
Yes, we did that.
Okay, you did that.
Absolutely, yeah. And we submitted, when we submitted the plans, and recognizing that this resubmission was recently made and it was just the holidays, we included a response letter that addresses all the comments from Gannett Fleming as well as Gilmore Associates.
Okay, got it. All right, let's turn to the staff. Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything to add, other than what was in my letter.
I don't have anything to add, other than what was in my letter.
Okay. Mr. Drummond?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Mr. Norsini?
Yes, sir, I have no comments.
All right, I think the solicitor had a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, just two things. One, going back to the definition issue, the definition in the zoning ordinance actually doesn't apply to you guys. That definition of a single-family is a building on a lot designed and occupied exclusively as a residence for one family. Obviously, you're a building for the, on one lot, but you're occupied by four families, so it's not going to apply there. Secondly, I came across today, we have a separate ordinance regarding streets and sidewalks, it's chapter 250, section dash 17, D as in David, number five, requires a minimum distance of five feet between the driveway and the side lot lines. I, you know, I'm only getting electronic copies of your plan, so I can't measure things out, but it appeared to me that the driveway, the lot line to the right there is probably less than five feet away.
So, currently, the curb line for the entrance driveway and the eastern property line are separated by 12 feet.
Further down, it's the entire driveway, yes, down there.
Oh, you're referring to this over here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's at two, two and a half feet. So, are you suggesting that we would have to either request a waiver from that or basically modify?
Yeah, this is not, this is not a SADO provision, so there's no waiver, specific waiver request provided.
Solicitor, could you give us the chapter and verse of that code?
Yeah, please.
I mean, the citation?
Yeah.
So, it's chapter 250, subsection, or dash 17, section 17, subsection D as in David, number five in parentheses. A minimum distance of five feet shall be maintained between the driveway and the side lot lines.
Okay.
And this is a separate right-of-way management ordinance, but it does apply outside of the right-of-way in regards to construction of driveways.
Well, I think we, what we would probably do, if that's a zoning requirement effectively, if that's what it is, then we would, we would go ahead and make the plan comply, we would simply move that to be five feet away, and we do appear to have the room to do that.
Okay.
But thank you for pointing that out.
Any other commissioner comments? All right, let's hear from the public. All right, seeing none. So, there is a revision on the plan that obviously needs to be made, and with respect to moving the driveway. So, would you like to come back, or would you like us to try to dispense with you at this point? I think we, I think you have to come back, because the plan's not compliant as of right now.
I would say this, we were here to ask for recommendation, because, you know, we've got timelines and a lot of other agreements that we have to do. I did talk to Mr. Phillips before the meeting. Because of the recent submission, he hasn't had a chance to basically verify that what we put in our letter was done, which is fine, I understand it, it was Thanksgiving and whatnot. So, what I would suggest, if this board is going to simply, the option's either going to be, you're going to table it, or you're going to recommend denial, then I would say that we would want to come back in January, having made that revision, and then also give your consultants a chance to verify that what we put in our letters was, in fact, done. So, but, you know, I understand how this goes, I understand the position you're all in, and can certainly appreciate the need to make sure that the plan you act upon is the plan that is effectively going to be, going to be done at the end of the day. So, that's where we are. Mike, do you want to add anything to that?
For the minor revision for the driveway, and subject to the letters that were submitted, would be, I would ask for recommendation based upon that with the plans being revised, for the driveway to meet the zoning code.
Okay. And I concur, I think it's probably better for you to revise the plan, come back, give us a little bit more of a comfort level as to what your submission looks like, and we can entertain you back in January.
Okay. Does this commission understand that you don't have a crystal ball, or you can't necessarily speak to what you don't know, but I guess the comments that we've had discussion both in November and tonight, that pretty is a good, it's a good summary of kind of what your thoughts and ideas are relative to the plan, and we probably won't see anything drastically new, as long as nothing drastically new appears in the plan set.
Yeah, I think, you know, you've been in front of us a couple of times, you did ask for a sketch plan review, we gave you plenty of food for thought, the consultant's letters are getting shorter, and I think some of us like it, some of us don't. I think you know who those folks are, some of them will not be there in January, but that being said, I think it's always better to come back with a cleaner plan, and it gives us a little bit more time to contemplate on what you're doing. To your credit, you know, even though I expressed dislike for the plan, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and I think there's some benefits to that, and I think a cleaner plan would maybe, maybe allow for a little bit more contemplation.
Very good. Well, we appreciate your time and your consideration, we'll look to see you back here, we'll be back, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just had one thing to add. It's on, it's on the Gilmore letter at the end, there's a comment that the fire company should review the driveway for emergency services. Has that been done yet, or is that something that you can do before you come back?
Well, I'd hope it'll be done here soon, but, you know, we don't have it in hand right now, so we would certainly get that in hand and have their response about them before we come back in January.
Yeah, I think that's wise. We don't have to vote to table, but let's do it anyway.
Commissioner, can I just make one more...
Of course.
...minor comment? I wanted to acknowledge my fellow Commissioner Vine's comment about aesthetics and character. I think one of the reasons why we feel like this is not in keeping of the character is that the five-unit townhouse development south of here didn't really consider good design. It just had the same townhouse development cookie cutter stamped five times, facing one direction. I think we have an opportunity here for that unit at the end that actually has frontage on Bryn Mawr Avenue to be specially designed, so that you have a front door or some kind of presence on Bryn Mawr Avenue. You know, maybe the front door could be turned, so that that sidewalk actually feels like you're coming into a mansionette or something, some arrival, as opposed to four exact same townhouse floor plans stamped, you know, four times, so.
That's fair. Are you agreeing with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. We can certainly consider that.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kim. All right, so, all right, in the matter of application 212-752-1300 Eagle Road, AKA Eastern University Gymnasium.
Evening, Nick Canelia, representing the applicant. We do understand that there are some comments in review letters, in particular regarding the traffic impact study, one of the comments being that they would like everything into one study, even though most of it has been provided, it's not included in one study. And what we would like to do, we understand the board may not act on this tonight, and we understand that, and we're willing to give whatever extension is necessary, but would like to hear any board comments that they may have, or even comments from the public, so that next time we can address those. And so, that's why we'd like the board to kind of stay with us a little bit. I know the board has seen this project before, we are closing the one entrance down by the gym, that has been determined, we have said that all along, that is still on the plans, that has not changed. We understand that some people may not like that idea. We also understand, as I mentioned, that there are some comments here that still need to be addressed, we feel like they're minor comments, but we would also like to hear from the board if they have any concerns that we need to address as well, so that next time we'd be able to address those, and perhaps even make further modifications to the plan if necessary.
So, Mr. Canelia, I appreciate you coming forth. Obviously, there is a little bit of work to do. I feel like the transportation impact study is, the issue is just hanging around like a lost pet. And I think prior to the meeting, you got a better understanding, the applicant got a better understanding of what exactly our traffic consultant's looking for, so I'm not going to belabor that point. I would like to address the Gannett Fleming letter of November 20th, and this is, one second. This is comment four under SADO. Like to learn a little bit more about your lighting plan, I think that was the other issue with respect to the parking lot?
Yes.
Maybe you can educate us on that?
Sure.
And we'll hear from the public, and I appreciate you being willing to listen, we'll solicit public comment as we usually do.
Good evening. I can pull up the lighting plan, it'll be hard to see at the scale, there's a lot of little points showing all the luminosity of what's there.
So, we all know who you are?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rob Lambert, Site Engineering Concepts.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
On behalf of Eastern. So, there was a lighting plan that was submitted, the comments asking for more clarification to that, which we can provide. The goal of the lighting on the campus is, you know, it is a residential campus, right? So, we have students on campus 24/7, so we do need, you know, lighting for safety, we do need that. But at the same time, we want to actually reduce our lighting, because we do have students on campus staying overnight, so we do have an internal requirement to try to keep lighting to a minimum. So, we've used all dark sky compliant fixtures, and so what that means is really, all the lighting is really focused down, so it goes down and it doesn't, you don't see the source of illumination, so the bulb is kind of hidden up in the fixture, rather than having, you know, a bare bulb that you can see. And so, we can address this as part of our revision to resubmit, and just be able to provide some more detail there on exactly where those fixtures were, and more clarity there.
Okay, so, we don't need to do this now, obviously, but clearly, our consultants were not clear of where, where the fixtures were. Commissioners, what questions do you have? Okay, let's hear from the consultants. Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing specific, other than what's in my letter, unless you have any questions I can address.
Got it. Mr. Drummond?
Feel free to reach out to our office regarding the traffic impact study, in addition, the ADA comments, if you have any questions about that, which is in our letter. Other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Mr. Norsini, would you like to say a few words?
Actually, you just covered it with the lighting, so.
Okay, got it. I think we all understand that the, you know, other than the lighting plan, the traffic impact study being buttoned up is critical here, and I think we're, we're close. Okay, let's hear from the public. All right, if you do come up, just state your name, your address, or the street that you live in, you're limited to five minutes, but we'd like to hear what comments you have.
Hello, TJ Doyle, I live at 7 Fenimore Lane. We had the opportunity to go over to Eastern's presentation on campus, I'll make similar comments to you all that I made there. Really appreciate the fact they're closing the entrance, and we recognize that's going to cut down the traffic on our street. I would suggest that, you know, there's some thoughtful planning around the wayfinding, because we get a lot of traffic of people trying to find a particular athletic field or gymnasium, so to the extent that we're able to address that from the Eagle Road entrance, that would be very helpful, just so we get the full benefit of that, you know, that gate closure. Really haven't seen a sort of a 3D rendering of what the massing would look like, and if that was in the materials, I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to review it, but I guess the biggest concern is with the, from our viewshed, from our street, that, you know, the building is going to sort of project towards our homes on Fenimore Lane, and what that facade of that building looks like. Recognize the lighting, if it's dark sky compliant, probably addresses any concerns with any bright lights, but, you know, they're basically, you know, our, my comments, I think, I'll just say this, I've lived on Fenimore Lane for 15 years, I think Eastern's been a great neighbor, their students have always been respectful, they allow the neighbors to walk through their property and enjoy their campus, so generally, in support of people being able to do what they want to do on their properties, and, you know, so long as it meets all of your requirements. But, yeah, I would, I would just want to understand what the, what the massing looked like, and how imposing that would be, and what the, you know, the trees, and, you know, what that view might look like from, you know, the existing driveway that's there now.
With respect to the wayfinding, what are you looking for exactly?
I don't know if there's just better signage or ability on websites, or, you know, people who rent the fields, because I, you know, I understand that there are club teams and things that are outside of the university, just to make sure that, you know, people are, you know, understand where they're going, not only, you know, within the neighborhood, but also on campus. And again, as I mentioned, I, you know, enjoy the campus, I walk through the campus, and I get stopped just about every time I'm on campus about, hey, where do I, how do I get to this gym or that gym? And happy to help people, they're always, you know, respectful, just that. Now that the traffic's going to come from Eagle Road and have to sort of go the circuitous route all the way through the campus to get to the gym, I could only see that exacerbating the issue on campus, not, you know, necessarily within the neighborhood, so.
Would the applicant like to respond? So, there's three issues, wayfinding, massing, and the viewshed from the homes, I think?
So, as we do have a rendering we were going to share tonight, it was part of the package, let me one second.
While you're looking for that, where, does, do you have to go in front of the designer review board with, if you're going to be looking at the facade, or what the facade's going to look like?
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes, we'll be in front of the designer review board. So, this is the building you probably don't care as much about, this is the Eagle Learning Center, this is out by Eagle and King of Prussia Road. So, this is from, this is the proposed gym addition, so this is from Olson Field, looking south, so Fenimore's off to the right here, you can see kind of the old part of the gym to the left, and then the new part of the gym on the right-hand side. Anticipating your question, the architects tried to create, you know, a couple of images from the street to show what it would be. So, the parking lot that is closest to Fenimore is actually shrinking, and part of that shrinking, right now, it doesn't have any islands in the, in the parking lot really for any landscaping, so there's a large island actually proposed in the center of that parking lot, which will afford an area to actually plant. And so, right now, where you have kind of that big sea of asphalt, we're going to break that up, be able to put some landscaping there to soften the image. This one here, you know, again, they just had some existing trees, sorry, and then this would actually be going into the driveway, because I understand that the previous image, you don't really see anything. This is actually going into the driveway, this is that little existing bridge, what's not shown here is, there's... from the street to show what it would be. So, the parking lot that is closest to Fenimore is actually shrinking. And part of that shrinking, right now, it doesn't have any islands in the parking lot really for any landscaping. So, there's a large island actually proposed in the center of that parking lot, which will afford an area to actually plant. And so, right now where you have kind of that big sea of asphalt, we're going to break that up, be able to put some landscaping there to soften the image. This one here, you know, again, they just had some existing trees. Sorry. And then this would actually be going into the driveway, because I understand that the previous image, you don't really see anything. This is actually going into the driveway. This is that little existing bridge. What's not shown here is, there's actually a gate that goes across this as part of this development, but again, this is the island that I was referring to with trees in the foreground. You can see the cars and then the building in the background. Obviously, these trees are a little bit taller than when they're going to be planted, but this is the overall intent of what that will look like.
So, I assume you've been in front of Shade Tree?
Yes, we have a recommendation from Shade Tree.
And that was my next question. What are we looking at in year one in terms of tree height, canopy?
Trees are typically like 12 to 15 feet, and Matt probably knows much better than I do for tree height, but deciduous trees probably, you know, 12, 15 feet when it gets planted.
Okay.
Again, this was kind of moving in closer, you can start to see the angle looking down, so the, kind of the entry is the red color of the brick that sits back a little bit further. And then in the foreground's kind of the end of the building that gets obfuscated by landscaping. You had a question about wayfinding? I do think actually having...
Sorry, keep going. Do you have one closer up, like in the winter and fall when the leaves are not on trees, what the actual facade, street景?
I do not have that.
Yeah, so the question was just for the audience of five at home, what does this look like in the winter?
Correct, we do not have that image with us. Question about wayfinding, I actually believe that, you know, I live in the area too. Right now, when somebody goes to the gym or the athletic fields, they get a Fenimore address, right, and kind of trying to find that, weaving it in. Now, by closing this entrance and having the internal circulation, people will get the 1,300 Eagle address and come in the main entrance. I agree, there will need to be some wayfinding, it is a little bit circuitous coming around. But what it will also afford is, is there's multiple parking lots in addition to the parking lot that's adjacent to the gym that people are going to pass, even if they're dropping somebody off, to see, oh, you know, 150 yards back, there's 12 empty parking spaces even though this lot was full, right? So, you're going to have that internal circulation and parking that's going to help with the gym traffic.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All right. Please come up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike McCrory, 9 Fenimore Lane, so TJ's the next-door neighbor, and you could actually see my property in one of these renderings here. Still a little confused about what this is going to look like. I appreciate the mature trees in 20 years. You know, we're going to be staring at that building each day, and I'm still having a little trouble understanding what that looks like, so we'd love to see what that looks like.
I just gave a look back at the architect, and he said, we'll have that, you know, we can provide that.
The second thing is, it's great that this road's going to close, but at the end of the day, and I agree with TJ when he said earlier, the students are great, the school's great, we'd love having them there. Two things, number one, they rent out their fields to third parties. So, when the other opposing teams come and when the students are there, there's never a problem. But when that, those fields get rented out, it's a major problem in our neighborhood. A lot of cars, a lot of traffic. I have four kids. Paul back there has his six on the way. TJ has three. Lot of kids in the neighborhood, so it creates a lot of traffic on the weekends and off times. The students are great, they're respectful, but even having a gated arm there, I don't think solves the problem with renting it to third parties. So, that's something for everybody to consider here. And then lastly, they recently purchased the property directly across the street from us, both 6 and 8 Fenimore. And so, we're just, I'm trying to understand how that gets incorporated into the mass program here, this project, or what's going to happen with that specifically. So, that's another concern that the neighbors have in the area. I mean, with that, you know, we want you to improve your property, we enjoy it, we love it, we love the students. A couple of the students actually help out with our family. I own a business in town, a couple of the students work at the business in town. So, we love having those neighbors, but we just want to make sure as this goes through that we know, understand what we're looking at and what we're getting here. So, appreciate the time, appreciate seeing that next rendering.
Okay, thank you. Any thoughts as to third-party rental? And I think there's a wayfinding probably issue there as well?
Yeah, well, I think Rob addressed the wayfinding. As to Fenimore, the house that was purchased by Eastern, that's its own residential, it's its own single-family residential. It has to be used as a single-family residential. There's no other proposed use for it except for single-family residential.
I think there's two parcels, right? 6 and 8, or is there just one?
I don't know if 6 and, and I, I was involved in, I kind of, is it second, is there?
There's an empty lot.
Yeah, there's no plans for it at this point. And again, that is also zoned residential. And I believe that it's one acre zoning there, so there's no chance for multifamily development.
One more comment. You guys aren't planting any lights for the fields, is that correct? To make the fields lit up at night? That was another concern that we had.
Not at this time, there's no intent at this time.
At this time?
I can't say what's going to happen 25 years from now.
Right, but that's, that's one of the other concerns as well, if those fields were to be lit up at night, it is all residents right around there, so.
We'll deal with it when the, if the time comes.
We'd have to come back here.
Yeah, for sure. So, just to clarify, 6 and 8 Fenimore residential, what's your intention, just to lease it out or use it?
They really don't know at this point, but it was purchased, as I said, the residential property, is a residentially zoned R1 zone property. If you look at R1 zoning, and Peter can confirm, single-family residence is the only thing you're allowed there.
Right, and they would have to obviously come to us and come to zoning hearing board.
If they were to do something different.
If they were going to do something, and we'd deal with it then, if that would ever happen.
George Packer, 27 Fairview. I live right across, and in all due fairness, I appreciate the lighting, whatever, but feel free to come to my bedroom this evening, which is lit up all the time. They do light the walkway on the east side of the pond, and I know it's supposedly downward directional, but once the leaves are gone at this time of year, it's not so downward. That'd be the first concern on my part, the lights. My second concern is, is that a sidewalk, Nick, beside the, beside the creek?
Yeah, I think the one on the right he's talking about by the side wall there.
I think that's just the image of the creek. I think that was just a graphic.
All right, because that was a bit scary. The perspective of the drawing, while nice, to be honest, I don't think, I don't think that building's that far back in reality. How many, do you know how many, how, what the footage is from the end of the stone wall to the beginning of that building? Or relative to where the swimming pool is now, can you tell me how far the gym will stick out?
I'll get you the answer.
That, yeah, and Nick knows how to get in touch with you. If you don't have, oh, if you have it? I just think the perspective in that drawing is a little askew.
I'm sorry, is the overarching concern for screening?
Yes.
In all seasons?
One of my main concerns is lights. And as Mac pointed out, just a, it looks like concrete facade building with a wee bit of brick at one end.
So, I know that you've been in front of Shade Tree, and we have a Shade Tree representative here. Mr. Golis, Commissioner Golis, did you have any public input during Shade Tree review process?
My memory, if my memory serves me correctly, there was no public comment at the Shade Tree Commission meeting.
Okay.
So, all I know is, when we looked at the species of trees, there's a number of screening trees that are not going to lose leaves, like green giants in the plan, and the tree list was, was pretty good. It conformed with what Radnor wants, and the number of trees was adequate, because they're taking some trees out as well.
Well, I assume they'd have to.
Yeah, so.
I mean, and in the neighborhood, we're losing a lot of ash trees, so.
So, in terms of implementation, you know, the Shade Tree Commission didn't have that kind of advice for Eastern, so that's something that could happen, though, I think with this development. If you guys could point out some problem points for you, then that's going to open the door for Eastern to say, okay, you know, these spots work for that tree block.
One of the major changes, I think, for lights on our street, well, at least for the two homes, myself and the people right next to me, is the driveway now that crosses over onto property that was, you know, there was no, no buildings, no structures. The law cabin was there years ago, the school, unceremoniously tore that down quickly. Still a sore point to those of us who are lifetime residents of the neighborhood, but that's the concern, I think, of the neighbors toward the school, losing the identity of the property that was there and infringing on the neighborhood. We, I mean, I knew fully that the school's there when I bought my home 22 years ago. Assume they would always build, and one of my concerns has always been lights on the fields, which would be difficult to extract a written promise that it won't happen. For me, that's what I would like the commission to do in return for this, but that's, unless it's in writing, right, it doesn't happen. So, anyway, just, I wanted to bring up the lights. I, and if you can't figure it out, seriously, just, what's the footage?
I'm going to show you where.
We're going to give you a rendering.
I walk it every day, so.
Or I can, I can.
I'm going to try to give you a visual. So, right on the left-hand side, you can see where the hockey field is. So, that's the end of the hockey field, and this was Olson Field up top. So, it's within the kind of end of Olson Field, the end of the swimming pool would be about this location. I was just looking at some of the existing trees, right? So, there's a couple of trees shown here. So, the existing pool is about, yeah, ends about, you know, approximately, right? I'm eyeballing it, but about that area. But the hockey field, you know, so it's going to be, call it 20 feet beyond where the hockey field would end.
Are we talking ice hockey here?
I'm sorry, field hockey.
I just perked up. My son plays club ice hockey. Got very excited. So, I don't want to, I don't want to relitigate your landscape or upcoming lighting plan. I think it's fair to say that Eastern has met most of the burdens of what you need to do to do this development. I do think that, you know, judging by the comments here, the public, although the public did have an opportunity to attend all meetings, and you're certainly, I'm not saying you're not compliant with that, but I think there is a lack of public education on what your landscape plan is, and I don't know how to cure that other than with maybe a little bit more neighborhood education?
Then I think actually the, some of the comments here, I think, were helpful tonight. I think, you know, I don't want to say we're going to redesign everything, but I think we can, you know, potentially refine some of the landscaping down that, you know, in that parking lot, down the end of the building, you know, just take, take a second look, right? We're going to be coming back for final at some point, and we'll be taking a third and fourth look at that point, but I think we can take kind of another look at that end and see what we can do to enhance it and address some of the comments.
Yeah, and I think in all fairness, I think the Planning Commission could have done a better job making sure that we covered that as well, and obviously, we're all going to fix that.
And again, if there's any other comments, we want to be able to hear all the comments so we can kind of address them all simultaneously.
By all means. All right, anybody else?
How you doing? My name is Paul O'Connor, I live at 4 Fenimore Lane. I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Just one comment I have after listening to some people is, the current entryway into the parking lot is obviously very accessible as of right now, and the plan is to kind of shut that off and make it less accessible. I was hoping we could be provided with some clarity on how that's going to be done, because one concern that I have is, obviously with young children and people speeding up and down that road, is that at some point, Eastern's just going to say, let's just raise the ladder, raise the bridge, and allow people to access it from Fenimore in Fairview. So, is there any permanency in terms of how we're going to block that off or limit the accessibility? Because even in the plans, it looks like it's a very, very accessible drive in, so.
The proposal's to use a swing gate for that, so it would be, you know, a gate that they can, you know, open when they need to open it, but it's intended that would be closed for, you know, day-to-day traffic.
Yeah, and remember too, that will be a condition of this approval, which means that Eastern would have to comply with it, you know? They would be in violation of township. I'm sure Mr. Norsini would be all over Eastern if they violate that condition.
Under what circumstances would that gate be open?
Emergency, basically. There could be some operating vehicles that would enter from that gate, all right, but it's, there's no day-to-day traffic, student traffic, faculty traffic, anything of that nature.
Okay, and that'll be stipulated in the approvals of the township? Okay, got it. Mr. O'Connor, any other questions? I'm good, thank you. All right, thanks for coming. Come on up.
So, I'm Brian Edmonds, 23 Fairview. So, again, appreciate Eastern as a neighbor, I've been on Fairview for 15-plus years now, so they've always, always been good neighbors. And obviously, we share an interest in making sure Eastern is successful and stays successful in our neighborhood. Students have always been very good neighbors, so do appreciate that. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend when Eastern did the meeting with the local residents, so I don't have a lot of the information that maybe some people have had before. So, I guess if you could show the rendering again that you had? Right, so, just to explain where we live, so if you backed out of this view here, you're on Fenimore. If you take a right from this view, you're on Fairview, and that's the road that Mr. Packer and I both live on. So, we, we share that Eastern across from Fairview Drive. So, I would be interested, do you have any renderings of how that looks from that part, that aspect on Fairview? Okay, because I would appreciate getting a better understanding of what it looks like from, from our perspective. Obviously, I share the concerns that everybody on Fenimore already expressed around lighting and the views. Especially, when I look at this rendering, it does look like there's more access off to the right. I don't know if that's just the way it looks, right? So, I do have a concern about that, as well as the fact that, you know, now there's going to be a lot of traffic going on that new access to the gym, and that traffic, when it comes towards that area, is basically pointed right at our house when they do that, until they make that turn up and over to the gym. And concerned about what the traffic looks like on Fairview specifically, we do see an increase in traffic. Don Hall is right across the street from us, so a lot of people who access Don Hall come by Fair, come on Fairview in order to do that. So, matter of fact, sometimes their Uber drivers drop food off at our house instead. So, I do, I do have a concern, not just on Fenimore, but also on the Fairview, and what that looks like, as well as the traffic pattern on Fairview.
Thank you. All right, duly noted.
Michael Song, your 14 Cornwall Circle. So, if you know our 14, if all these neighbors are kind of facing, I'm going to call them west of campus, or south of campus. Understand all of their challenges, I think this, this road should be closed. Our problem, our concern was the routing of this new road. So, I have a few questions there. Historically, it seems like that road drives through a parking lot? So, is that parking lot going to turn into a road, and how many parking spots are lost? That would be one question I would have. Do you have a drawing of the, like a, can I borrow a, like, high-level drawing? Do you have a drawing of the, like, can I borrow a, like, high-level drawing? Let's see what we have for you. Does that one work? The aerial? Yeah, yes. So. So, you come through here? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, that parking lot. So, the road, is everybody familiar with where the, the road is going? The new road that's being built? Bottom left?
So, using the aerial, so this is the existing gym, tennis courts, this was Olson Field. The new driveway is coming across, there's an old volleyball court here, coming across to connect to the internal access driveway. And I believe the question is, is this is a driveway and parking area that currently exists on campus, so there's a, you can see the parking lot to the bottom right. There's a parking lot kind of in between softball here, and there's an existing drive that really goes through this area that we're gonna be using as that access.
Do you have to remove parking? 'Cause that's not a road.
It, it's an existing driveway, right? So, we have a driveway on campus that comes in off of Eagle. That driveway goes all the way around. There are areas of parking along the driveway in various areas, and then that will continue along, connect to the new drive connecting to the gym parking area.
So, the question was, are you removing parking? And I don't believe you're removing parking.
You're not removing any parking.
Right.
I don't know the definition between a dri, a parking lot and a road, but that's a parking lot. I, I don't, I don't know what, if, if, if you'd point me to how to research a parking lot versus a road, that is a parking lot. That's not a road. So, that's not a driveway. It's a parking lot.
So, Mr. Lambert, I think, you know, we all know that you can drive through a parking lot. Could you give us the distinction of why, how that road will be delineated?
So, it's really just an existing, it's used today. So, that, that driveway is used today for cars to, you know, drive through campus. I think it's, what do we have, about 50 or 60 parking spaces, additional parking spaces that that will access. There are already, you know, again, I don't know the exact number, but there are already hundreds of parking spaces that access that same driveway, right? Right now, that, that comes through campus, there's kind of an upper parking area, and that driveway goes through and has parking along that area, and it comes down to the, kind of, a lower parking area. Again, there's parking on, on both sides of that driveway access, but then that driveway access continues out where we will then connect to it.
Okay. Tell us what your concern is.
Well, just the, the, that road is flawed. You know, I, I would love, I think Fenimore should be closed, but how we're, how traffic is routed down, over, and up, and in my view, down, over, through a parking lot. Now, the traffic that goes all the way through that parking lot is nil right now because it doesn't have anywhere to go. Now, it's gonna have places to go. You're routing all of, you're routing buses through the parking lot to get to the gym. Buses don't, don't, not many buses do that today. So, just, in, in terms of a design, the routing of the traffic through a big U going through, I would say, a quarter of that, you're traversing a quarter of that road, a quarter, a quarter of that mileage through parking lots, not roads, in my opinion. So, so my concern is I, it was a flawed design, and I, I don't know when that ever got reviewed or approved, but the reason I don't like the road is the lighting. That road, bottom left, some, I don't know who mentioned, traffic, that road, those headlights will be directly into our house. Can you pull up that, the parking lots, please?
So, just to, just to clarify, your concern is with screening in the evening hours?
Noise, screening, traffic.
Okay.
Right? It's, it's moving all of the traffic through that road, and now you only have one entrance, so we're not fans of it. So, just to kind of articulate that, lighting is hugely important to us, because we overlook all of this, all of this. We back up to the university. We see the lighting that is today. I agree that much of it is downward, not all of it, all of it is downward. That traffic that's gonna go down that road, where that, those folks traveling south, that, those headlights will be directly into our bedroom. We, when we went to the public meeting, the parking lot was closer to the, initial drawing was the park, that parking lot that is the, I guess, next to the pond? This one? Or I can't point it. The, what is that, the, how many spaces is that one?
Are you referring to the volleyball?
I refer to the volleyball, yeah, right.
Has that, has the volume of those spots changed since the last drawing?
It may have actually been reduced a little bit, but this, you know, this is the volleyball parking lot. It's, it might actually be a little bit smaller than the original one.
I guess one of the requests was just to reduce the traffic, to reduce the lights to us and those on the southern side of campus. How many spots is that? It would have been great to find another place on campus for those spots, because we're just putting more lights, more noise to us and neighbors on the southern part. I mean, there's a whole set of houses that, that actually butt up against the university. And look at this, I mean, if I could, so, so the number of spots, the parking, having parking there versus finding that somewhere else on campus, I would have loved to have seen that those spots be, found another home. But, you know, the road is being built, I can't change that. Parking lot's not being built yet, so, but lighting, noise, huge, huge concern, and I just echo what everybody, we're fans of the university, but just to be a voice of the neighbors on the southern aspect of this, hugely impactful. We, like I said, we, we look at this every day outside our bedroom. So, just think about, think about how much work is happening there, and think of that, think about that being 50 to 100, 150 yards outside of your bedroom window. Just, just want you to think about that. That's, that's what our challenge is. I know the Fenimore folks 100% should have that road closed, but we're now cycling traffic in a different direction of this campus, and it's gonna have impact elsewhere. That's, that's the comment.
Okay. Just to clarify, you're not concerned about traffic safety? There's no, it's basically noise and light, correct?
Well, I mean, traffic safety.
Because we can have, we could have Mr. Drummond kind of give us a little bit of a primer on what, what we think of traffic safety in the, in the submission. I think it was approved. We are looking for a traffic study, but the traffic study is not internal to the site.
It's, right.
The traffic study has not been approved yet. We're still waiting for the revised one.
Right.
Yeah, at least, not worried about internal, I, the study, I assume the study was, was not internal. I mean, there seems to be a lot of, a lot of work that has to enable that road to be built for buses to be able to make that turn, an extension of the existing road, which I forget the name of. So, I mean, it's not, it's not an easy commute for a bus if you've walked over there. It's just not. So, yeah, it's not, it's, I mean, it's safety for, everybody uses this campus. We, we appreciate the use of the campus, but, you know, it's not a safety concern. It's the lighting and traffic, noise.
Okay, got it. Would the applicant care to respond?
I, I don't know what else we can add, but we'll try to add more next time, you know, when we, when we come back. That's why it's very good to have these comments, so we can attempt to address them next time.
Yeah.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? What's the differential in parking between right now, how many spots you have versus the design once you have the new gym and everything else up?
Yeah, well, be, go ahead, Rob.
What's the differential?
So, on campus, we have zero, we have no net change, right? And so, we, we received a variance to not park every space the way that the ordinance is reviewed, so you don't have tons of parking spaces that's not used. So, we have no net change. We are relocating, let's see here, there's about 50 parking spaces that were kind of around the gym to other parts of campus. Again, you know, we, we're trying to keep some parking in close proximity to the gym, but then you can see up by the Eagle Learning Center, we're adding parking adjacent to this building. This is at the corner of Eagle and King of Prussia Road. The traffic lights actually just off to the upper right-hand corner. And here, and I always pronounce this wrong, Speric parking lot, we're adding some parking there. Again, this is, and I'm gonna go back to the original, so the Speric parking is in this location, right next to Speric Hall. The ELC parking that you saw on the previous slide is in the upper right-hand corner, and then we had 17 parking spaces we're putting in where the former volleyball is, and then there was 43 parking spaces now adjacent to the gym.
So, how big is the gym? The gym itself is gonna be a multipurpose?
There's a lot of, you know.
Basketball. Where I'm getting at, it's like, at what point will all the spaces be filled? That's probably what, most likely a basketball game, I'm assuming?
It could be a field event, you know, we do have two fields behind there, we, you know, so there'll be, you know, full off and on. It's a, it's a big campus with, I, I don't know the total number off the top of my head, but it's probably 1,000 parking spaces.
Okay, my suggestion would be, is that right now with the design, you're still pushing a lot, a disproportionate amount of the parking more towards the southern end of the campus, which?
Actually, not. We, we actually moved it to the, to the northeast corner, right? So, we moved parking that was in the kind of southwest to the northeast. So, the wayfinding comment is, is a good one, right? And then we're gonna take that to heart and provide, you know, some, you know, pedestrian wayfinding through campus, because we are pushing, you know, cars to not, you know, necessarily drive all the way back, right? They might park in a closer parking spot and, and walk, you know, to a baseball game or walk to, you know, a soccer game rather than going through campus to get there.
I'm just trying to address the concerns that you're hearing about with the additional, with the traffic and on, you know, the pressure on Fenimore Road.
So, the, the pressure on Fenimore Road, and I think there was a question earlier about the traffic on Fairview. Again, we're, we're trying to eliminate that access from day-to-day traffic. So, right now, we have 100 cars that come in and out and solely use Fenimore and Fairview. We're eliminating that turnover trip traffic every day coming in and out of Fenimore and Fairview, so they're gonna get, obviously, a reduction. We do have, and I'm gonna use very round numbers, 50, 60 parking spaces around the gym that will be using our internal driveway that goes through the parking area that was previously mentioned, so we'll come through there. There is additional parking a little bit to the west that currently exists on campus that drives right through that parking lot. So, that, you know, that movement currently exists. We've looked at bus turning templates. We use turning templates to see how a bus will maneuver. The design is, you know, a, a bus can come down, make the right turn, come up, be able to, there's a little pull-off area right next to the gym to be able to unload anyone there, and they, they can sit there or go park on another part of campus. It can maneuver right around this parking lot. Here are the islands, since we have this up. Here are the two kind of larger landscape islands. One of the reasons they are kind of extra-large is to accommodate the turning movements of the bus, right? Is, is we have a bus that can circulate through the parking and then come back out to go back out to Eagle Road. So, we, we have looked at a lot of those, you know, design considerations, looking at grades, right? So, everything is 3D. So, the last segment, so you can see there's a little bit of a crosswalk. The last segment of this is very downhill, right? And so, if a car is coming south, it is going to go downhill, and, you know, you can see lights in the distance, but the, you know, the, kind of where they're shining at that end part will be going down. There is a section, you know, that is flatter going along where the parking is. Again, hearing the concern, you know, one of our kind of tasks after this meeting is gonna go look at landscaping, and is there landscaping we can potentially add in, in this closer area, you know, to where those lights would be to block that kind of initial piece? The second piece, you know, again, they're gonna be headed down. So, you know, can we accommodate some additional landscaping internally to address a view from, you know, as I think you said, 150 yards away, right? So, and that 150 yards is also uphill, right? And so, we have kind of topography there uphill, but there may be an opportunity to add some additional landscaping in this area, you know? Again, you know, we appreciate the comments and, and can try to work through that.
Yeah, and I think as much as we trust the applicant, as far as the bus turning templates, we, we do have consultants for that, and I think they blessed the initial plan. Mr. Drummond, you wanna say something?
I do have a question for Eastern University. Regarding parking for larger events, how will that be accommodated? Will it be staff that's guiding drivers into the parking areas, or, I guess, how will that be accommodated?
So, for larger events, and I can ask Trevor, but for larger events, yes, there will be, you know, and I guess it depends all on the size of the event, right? If the anticipated parking will be accommodated by, you know, the parking immediately adjacent to the gym, there likely won't be anyone there, but if you're having, you know, a larger event, a graduation, something like that, yes, absolutely, there would be, you know, staff on campus to help direct and, and show people where to go.
And we'd want the applicant to stipulate that as well. I mean, I don't know how you would define larger event, but.
There could be a discussion in the traffic study just addressing that.
Okay.
I, I went to a ribbon-cutting there for a building they're adding in addition to, and at that event, there were people showing you where to park, and I wouldn't even consider that really a larger event.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, they, we went to the, the meeting where they asked for the variance for those, for that parking spot. I would have loved to not had those 17 and give them an approval to not have 17 less spots, just 'cause that's less disruptive to the, you know, that's between two ponds, it's less impervious, and it's just a heck of a lot less intrusive from a traffic noise lighting, but I guess that's too late, but I, I'd vote for not letting, making them have those 17 spots.
We, we had a very extensive hearing on parking, and, and we, we looked at the submissions, we looked at the traffic studies, and the applicant did ask for no additional parking. We, I don't remember if it was unanimous, but we certainly recommended approval, zoning concurred, and I think, I certainly understand the concern about the 17, but I think the applicant has shown us that they will address your comment, certainly screening. There, I do remember there are some steep slopes. I don't know if they're exactly in that area, but perhaps that could be additional screening as well, so maybe the applicant can demonstrate that for us and what that would look like next time you come around.
Yeah.
I assume you're going to come back on January 7th, correct? Or do you need more time?
We would like to return January 7th.
Okay. So, next meeting, same time. I won't chair it, but January 7th.
One, you, one last question. You said the traffic study's for external. Is, is a traffic study never something that happens for an internal road like this?
Mr. Drummond.
Typically, on internal roads, we will look at the plans to address safety issues, as regarding like the size, number of pedestrians along that road, but typically, a traffic study does not address all the internal streets within a development such as this.
I mean, that's an answer. I don't like it, but that's the answer, right? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Sorry, not sure if this counts towards my five minutes, but I, you know, I'm in the real estate business, so I have, I am familiar with when they show the swing radiuses, if there's a plan that somebody can point to, or if there's a plan that can be provided that shows the bus routing and the swing radiuses, and it brings to mind also, typically, fire marshal might require, you know, a full-size hook and ladder in, in order to maneuver in and around the parking lot, how that might work. Maybe that, the answer is, that's why there's an emergency gate. But I think from a bus perspective, as it's leaving, you know, this area, and if, if it can swing around, counterclockwise around this parking lot, that's great. You just wouldn't want them doing a K-turn and hearing the beeping. Right. So, if you, we can see that on a plan, that would be, I think that would be helpful.
So, and I don't know exactly where to point to, but I know that it's, our agenda item for Eastern University does contain, if you look at our agenda, contains the entire chronology of this submission, and I do believe that some of the items that you're seeking are there.
Yes, there was a turning template, I believe, in there for buses and for emergency vehicles. I think Rob's looking for that right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, in terms of the, the gate, I know the, the other entrance that's, I think, down here on Fairview has a, like the yellards, ballards, they may be removable probably for emergency purposes, I'm not sure.
They are.
Seem a little more permanent than a gate, right? When people see ballards, they think, we can't ever go through here. A gate seems like, oh, it's just closed right now, maybe next time I come, it'll be open. Where, to me, I, I, I would prefer to see ballards where it'd be a little more permanent, even though they would be removable, right, for emergency purposes or for, if there's something you needed for construction or something else to happen. You know, and, and I guess lastly, while, while we're here to make the comments, the facade that faces, you know, the, the end of the building here, you know, to the extent that it could incorporate a little more permanency in terms of its materials, stone, brick, anything that, you know, sort of in keeping with the, the campus, the stone walls that exist, the, the water wheel, that type of thing, to me, looks a lot more attractive than, you know, a white or cream color drive-in facade. So I did see, there's a little bit better fenestration treatment that didn't previously, you know, show up on some of the renderings I had seen, so appreciate, you know, the, the glass, but, you know, to the extent that, you know, it could be a little more in fitting with the, the neighborhood and, and the more historic portions of the campus, that would be preferred.
Sure. And I think design review will, will get a say in that as well.
Yes. And just for reference, the plans at C-108, there's a four different sheets with turning templates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lambert. Anybody else?
Sorry, Brian Evans again from 23 Fairview. Just a quick question, because you mentioned traffic on Fairview as well. There are currently two entrances off of Fairview Drive onto the eastern camp, well, there's more than, more than two, but the two that are in close proximity to, to my residence. One is the one by the, the gatehouse, which is, has the bollards. And there's one directly, you know, up, up the road, just, you know, 50, 100 feet at, at the most. And that one goes above to the kind, I'll call that Upper Done Hall. The other one would go to Lower Done Hall. There's currently an, an access being built between those two on campus. Is that permanent, or is that temporary?
My understanding, I wasn't involved in that piece, but my understanding that's a temporary access.
Okay. So then you'll still maintain the open entrance then to Upper Done Hall?
Correct.
Okay. Because that, that was a concern as well, especially when we saw that access road being cut in, because now people have direct access to the main campus by cutting through that Upper Done Hall going down the access road, and now they have full access to the campus. So is there any plans to, I don't know how temporary, temporary is? Is that going to be closed off so that that traffic doesn't occur?
I believe that's being used for construction now. I, I don't know, you know, the exact timing on it.
So construction vehicles are going to come down Fairview Drive and go in to Upper Done and then down? Is that right?
Again, I'm not...
It doesn't show, it doesn't show...
Right. In the lower left, I was just looking at where it is. I, I don't have that, I, I've been involved in that project. But that existing driveway to the, I believe you referred to as the Upper Done Lot, will remain, so that upper driveway is remaining there.
Right. So the concern now is that, once you have access to Upper Done, you have access to the whole campus, because they've now cut in an access road that didn't exist before between Upper and Lower. So that would be, that's a huge concern for us, because that traffic is right across the street, that entrance is literally right across the street from my house. So that's, that's a, that's a concern for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
George, George Packer, 27 Fairview. Not exactly a zoning commission thing, but I'd like to beg the people...
We're planning, not zoning.
Oh, sorry, commission. Could you please talk to your contractors and remind them that 7:00 AM is the start time in Radnor? Right? Am I correct?
I believe so.
You are correct, sir.
So Steve, should I call the township police at 6:40 in the morning, Friday morning?
So if, if that should occur before 7 o'clock, it is a call to our police department?
It's a regular occurrence.
So that, that would be...
Yeah, I'd let it go for a while.
Anybody else?
Could I, could I ask just a side question that's not relevant to parking or access or neighboring streets? For my own curiosity, for the, the designer of the building, I'm assuming it's going to be lead design, right? The new, the new gym?
Dude.
No.
I have no batteries.
Not full certification.
They, they won't be taking certification.
So here's a question. This is not just towards Eastern, this is basically towards all-new, is Dave here? He stepped down. Does he even like to rebuild of Ithion Elementary School? Why aren't we building, or why aren't you guys considering putting solar on top of that roof, since you're going to be doing a brand-new design on that? And with the money that is out there right now at the federal government with Inflation Reduction Act, there's monies available, grants, low-interest loans to do so. And I'm just curious, as a township, for these large buildings, why aren't we require, either why aren't we requiring, or even just from your own profitability standpoint from the school or energy efficiency standpoint, why aren't you installing solar? I mean, as a, as a side note, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I drove my son and his friends to watch the Radnor Soccer win the state championship, and we were, I forget what school we were at, but this is north of Harrisburg, brand-new, relatively brand-new school. They had a field of solar panels. A field of solar panels is basically subsidizing their electric use. Why as a township, why aren't we doing that, or thinking about it at least? Like, it's probably even a question for my fellow members of the board, more so for the audience, but I think it's just something that we should collectively think about.
I, I think, let me redirect that to Mr. Norsini. So I think we're, we're limited to what we can require as, as a township. I think there's a building code issue and...
I, I believe you're correct, Mr. Fruman. It, it, this is something that has been brought up in general during the planning process for our comprehensive plan. So those comments are out there. I don't know how and if they can be implemented into the building code or any of our other codes, but the thought is out there for renewable energy resources. And just, I will add, the township is placing solar panels on this building as well as our public works facility, so just...
Just a quick follow-up comment to that. Years ago, and I'm the old soul on the planning commission, we had an ordinance in front of us for solar and wind and, I forget what the third energy source was, but it was considered briefly and it never went anywhere. So it's in the files somewhere here.
But, you know, in layman's terms, I think we're beholden to a building code, and there's a limit to what we can require. And I believe, you know, you can certainly answer the question, but I would imagine it's an economic decision, and you looked at the alternatives to, to do something more, more environmentally friendly. Any other comments? So I, I think we learned a few things tonight, and I do want to credit your other client, Mr. Canilia, Villanova University. I think they do a fantastic job with neighbor education. I think Eastern is, we applaud your willingness to entertain us as well as the residents. And I know you're new to the development game or newer, where, whereas Villanova's had a much longer runway, much more complicated project. I think it's fair to say that even though by law, the public was allowed to comment through all phases of the project, I think a little bit more could have been done ahead of this hearing as well as perhaps others. We would have appreciated the public being more in tune with what you were trying to accomplish to get those questions answered prior to tonight's meeting. That being said, we welcome the public at any time during any submission, and we're thankful for your comments. I'm sure the applicant will address them on January 7th or any subsequent meetings. This is, they're going for preliminary approval, they will be back for final, they will be also in front of the Board of Commissioners at least twice. So there'll be more opportunities like this. But my hope tonight is that the applicant draws the public in. Maybe not necessarily, they can do this in this venue, we're, we're certainly appropriate for that, but I'm hopeful that you can proactively draw your immediate neighbors in. I certainly get the mailings, I'm not an immediate neighbor, but I get the mailings from the university. And my indication is that you want to be a great neighbor, and I think you got a lot of credit for that this evening. I think you can do better. So, that being said, I'll see you on January 7th.
Thank you. And you're aware that Eastern did have several meetings with neighbors beforehand, but I appreciate the neighbors asking the detail they gave us this evening, so that I, I believe this is very worthwhile, both from the comments from the board and from the neighbors here this evening. So thank you for the opportunity to proceed, at least in this limited way this evening.
Sure. By all, and I think we know where we're going with this submission tonight. We're just going to take a vote to table, and we'll see you back on January 7th. I think, again, as I said before, the review letters are getting smaller, we have a very good pathway forward, and we look forward to you, your submission on certainly the landscape, the, the lighting plan, as well as final strokes in the transportation study, as well as anything that you've heard tonight.
And I'll provide the necessary extension to the township in regards to MPC.
All right. Very good. Okay. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to table in the matter of 212-752-1300 Eagle Road, AKA Eastern University Gymnasium. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Vines. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. See you on January 7th. All right. Last item. Application 212-981, Radnor Township School District, in the matter of Ithion Elementary School. So just to give a preview to everybody, you know, I love to do that to you. The applicant was in front of us on November 4th, they were looking for recommendation on two variances, Section 280-112D, uses on steep slope areas, and Section 280-112E, removing vegetation from land of steep slopes. We recommended approval. It was unanimous. Then the applicant appeared in front of zoning hearing board on November 21st. Zoning Hearing Board concurred with our recommendation and approved the variances. They're back for land development tonight, and because this is a major project, they are here for our recommendation for preliminary approval. That being said, I don't want to spoil the ending here. I don't think any of the parties have any illusions, neither us nor the applicant, about the significant issues that still remain to be unresolved, at least as far as our review letters are concerned. So our hope tonight is to work through some of the broader strokes of the submission, so that, you know, when the applicant returns, we can give a clear recommendation on, to our governing body of how to proceed. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Falcone?
It makes great sense, yep. So David Falcone here on behalf of the school district, and MJ, you've done a great job of kind of getting us rolling here, and we are really here again just to continue the discussion with you all. We know we've got some things to handle going forward. We know that we had a lot of issues to address in that first round of review letters that we got. We did get a second round that has, shows kind of progress, but still more work to be done. What we wanted to do was kind of report that we have been to the zoning hearing board, we've obtained those necessary variances. When we were here before you last, seeking that recommendation for that body, we explained that it was kind of a threshold issue for this project to even be able to move forward. So that has happened now, we are in the process of land development. We have yet to appear before Shade Tree, we've made that submission, so we're going to be at Shade Tree in December. We think that's a pretty significant portion of this project. We know there's a lot of tree disturbance here, we're working closely with the township's arborist, as well as with ours, as part of a tree mitigation program to try and revitalize those woods. We think that's going to be a successful program. We're excited to get the feedback from the Shade Tree and then ultimately report that back to you all in January, or in January. We also know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done as far as the traffic impact goes, that traffic impact study, continuing those discussions with Damon, that's really important, we know. That's another significant issue with this project as far as an open items list. We also will be back in January and will bring our construction folks who can talk more about phasing for the plan, to, to explain how we intend to phase it, to have kind of the, the smallest impact possible for the student body as we construct the building, take down the old building, all of those things, we know that's very relevant. We did have up on the screen, I don't, just kind of an exhibit that showed, it's kind, it's a little bit dark here, but it does show on here, so this is just going to be an existing Ithion, that, that's not what we're looking for. So this plan I have up on the board, you see, the existing building here, Ithion, and then the, what's being proposed, how it kind of hugs the back of the building. And I know that Mr. Vines had asked us to kind of come back and discuss how this is going to actually happen in reality when we construct, when we construct the building. Just again, for kind of more of a staging discussion, this building will be constructed before the existing building is taken down. So the intent is to get this built, move the students from existing Ithion into the new building, and then take down the old building. So it's going to be quite an undertaking, I'm sure, but I'm certain the district will do it in fantastic fashion. So I'm going to turn it over to our civil engineer, who will just walk through the waivers that we're going to be asking of part of this project. That's kind of another issue we think we could probably tackle now, because those waivers in all likelihood will not change, and we would love the feedback from the, from the commission.
Yeah, and I concur with your approach. I think where we want to keep this is at those four waivers and leave the rest of the meat and potatoes for subsequent meetings. Is that fair?
It's very fair.
All right, sounds good.
Yep, thank you.
Hi. Elizabeth Baldwin with ELA. I just do want to note on the most recent letter, I think there's a list of five waivers, but one of them is just a comment, so it's not meant to be a waiver. I think it's number four on the review letter. So our original waivers are not changing from, I believe, at least two submissions ago, so... Any, are you, you good with that, Roger? Yep, okay. So the first waiver is for the plan information, improvements within the 500 feet. We have 100 to 200 feet outside of the property limit shown on all of our plans. Our site improvements, which, Kyle, or is there access to... Yeah.
Do you want to speak to the plans?
Um, are these working? Are they, okay. Yep, so we'll do the plans. Just to give you a, a general overview, but as you can see, the improvements of the property are within, well within the property boundary, and then also, we have a significant portion of the property that's undeveloped. So especially in those areas, we are, you know, hoping to get that relief, so we don't have to provide extensive survey and all of that for areas that are not being impacted as part of the project. But all of our...
Could you just clarify what the radius is from the actual project site to, I know that everything's going to be impacted, but the school itself? Just give us an idea of what radius we're working with, that you, you intend to have plans for.
As you can see, I'm going to generally scale, from our building improvements, we have, you know, about 450 square feet of the radius from our building improvements. There is grading stormwater management improvements on the, you know, downstream sides of the property. However, all of our tie-ins, all of our grade changes, we're not proposing any road changes out the front, so we're really well within our property and not, you know, impacting anything else. anything outside, but we do show well outside of our property boundaries as well. Any questions, comments on that waiver?
I'd like to defer to Mr. Phillips. I think this is such a large project. This is one of those waivers I'd like to take another look at. Normally, we'd grant it automatically on smaller developments.
I would have no objection to it, since there's no off-site improvements being done. And the areas, as they mentioned, where they're tying into the sanitary sewer and some of the modifications of the front driveway have been surveyed. The rest of it, they can show on an aerial, like, like most developments do.
And I will note that we have provided, it will be part of our new resubmission, but since then, we have received updated survey to satisfy some of the sanitary comments and stuff, and extending our survey to achieve some of that, just so we have like the sanitary information downstream further. So we have extended our survey, and that, you know, is well past this requirement, but it's just, you know, for the entire site, we do not meet that threshold.
Okay.
And in my opinion, the pertinent information has been surveyed and not taken just from an aerial.
Okay. So commissioners, this is, this is sort of a sketch plan review, so we're not, we're not proceeding with the submission, we're just getting educated in the four waivers. What questions do you have? Please proceed.
Okay, so the second one is for the parking facilities, to allow for a parking lot that exceeds the 30, 30 car limit. And, well, we'll start. First, I believe that you've been presented this before, but the existing topography on the site is obviously very challenging, including, you know, us seeking relief for the slope, the steep slopes, and us not wanting to impact the site any more than we have to. So there's a lot that goes in with this parking lot design. There is the existing topography of just trying not to break up and start to disturb more areas of the site, which would then disturb more steep slopes. We are maintaining the existing access drive, so that also kind of sets up our site of where the new parking lot's going to be added. And then we also are keeping this existing facility active during construction, so we need to maintain some of the existing parking, which then makes sense for us to tap onto that for our proposed use too, to kinda allow for the phasing and staging of construction, and then also the student and teacher traffic during that. There's also with schools, there is, you need a separate bus loop and you need a separate parent loop. So allowing us, I will turn to our proposed parking area. Right here, and you can see that we, we have this existing, or a proposed bus loop right here with an existing car rider loop here, but then allowing the parking in between. With the school also, you have to have the one ingress and egress point too, so it allows for, you know, that point to be maintained, but also present enough pedestrian access to the site from the parking areas. Although it is over 30 spaces, we have separated them into different bays with trees, with landscaping, and additional features to almost make it feel as if it's, you know, not one huge congruent lot. And then another big thing for the school was the security of the parking. So, you know, like times like now, you have teachers or you have students, any after-school activities leaving the site, because of the steep slopes and because of the lighting issues, this allows for the security to be better monitored as well.
Because you're using less land for parking?
Correct. Yeah. And it sits, you know, in front of the school property, so it's, you know, the easiest. If you started to break this up with how everything is sloped, you know, you would be looking at having significant distance between the parking lots and slopes and challenges when it would go from, you know, this orientation to starting to break it up.
If, just playing devil's advocate here, if we were to impose this as a condition, we wouldn't grant that waiver. Do you have to go back to zoning hearing board, or you don't have an issue there as far as steep slopes?
Uh, I mean, I anticipate we will have steep slope issues if we have to change this design.
Okay, so you would have to go back to the zoning hearing?
Most likely.
Okay.
And then our Shade Tree would also change, because we would be disturbing, right now we're disturbing as minimal as possible, the forest area and the trees, so I'm assuming that that whole submission would be modified as well.
Okay. Mr. Phillips, if I could ask you to speculate, why would you, why would this condition be in our code? What would be the rationale for breaking up parking?
Well, I certainly am not gonna try to go back in time and decide how things ended up in our code. But specifically for this, and the way that this parking lot is laid out meets the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the comment was specific to dimensions of the areas that separate each little pod that they have there in that. So it's not, it's not that you can't build a parking lot in that configuration, it's that dimensionally it needs to meet what the code stipulates, and it's the 10-foot separations and the, an island every 10 spots and all of that. So it wouldn't be a waiver, if you would consider giving a waiver, it wouldn't be a waiver allowing this to happen, because this can happen, it's just the specifics of the internal dimensions of it.
Okay, got it. Commissioners, what questions do you have on this one?
But this is, this is just temporary with what you're talking about during, during the staging of, or the implementation of the construction.
No, so this parking lot is final, but there is a use of, if, this portion of this parking lot is part of the existing parking lot. So during the use, we will maintain, you know, we'll be building a loop maybe on this side. I would have to kind of, I guess, we don't have our phasing plans in here, but we're, we're using this portion during, we would call it phase two. So during, when this building is active and we need to demo to allow for that, but also we need a bus loop during that time and all of that. So there's kind of use of the existing parking lot throughout the phases, but then it ultimately turns into the proposed parking lot. I mean, the proposed parking lot's a lot bigger than what that portion would be, but...
So how many spaces am I, are we looking at right now on this design?
Uh, Kyle, do you know off the top of your head?
142 and 17 bus.
Yeah, so we're 147.
So that would include for both faculty as well as?
ADA and, you know, any other. So there's 85 staff that is anticipated, and then the remaining is for other, you know, for the events that would happen, I guess, or per the-
That's also, that's where it's getting, it's like what happens when there's a bad school.
All right.
Elizabeth, what is the grade change across the parking lot?
So that, that is the next waiver, is to talk about the grade change across the parking So the big thing here is we're asking for relief of the, exceeding the 3%, but we're within the threshold of the 5% for parking lots, less than 30. So again, I guess it's up to interpretation, or I'm, you know, not quite sure what that entails when it comes to this specific, but what we find is the, the car rider loop or the drop-off loop needs to be the flattest area, because it's, you know, the kids getting out of the car. So that is, you know, within the 2% or less than 2% in this area. And then we need to gradually go up to meet the existing grades and use that existing parking lot, so we have to exceed that 2%, or I guess the 3%. So as we go up, it gets a little steeper, but the entire parking lot as a whole is less than the 5% required. Well, required for the 30, 30 parking lot, 30 space parking lot, but then for anything exceeding that, they want it, the ordinance says, to be under the 3%. So that's where we're asking the waiver.
I'm assuming the steeper parking lot is reserved for adults, not children?
Correct. Correct. So the ADA down here is also 2%, you know, within the 2, 2 to 3%, the ADA is, has to be less than the 2%. So that is all there, and then as it goes up, I mean, and again, a 5% slope, if you're looking at, really it's the, the drive aisle and then up in this upper parking spot. So it's less than 5%. I think 4%-
Do you want a handheld?
Huh?
Do you want a handheld? Would that be better?
Or I can just talk loudly, I don't know if you guys can hear me.
I'm not worried about us, we can hear you just fine. Here.
I can, I, I can live it, I'm good. I, I hold that thing weird anyways. So, so, yeah, so we're really looking, in this area is our steep, steep area that is ultimately where the relief is, and then as you go down, it goes less, less steep towards the building entry.
I'd imagine those steep parking spaces are probably less of a premium. That's not where employee of the month is going to park, right?
Correct. But, I mean, obviously the priority is for the ADA, so.
So when does the grade become problematic with stormwater?
Um, for this plan, it doesn't become problematic. That actually helps us, you know, that it is not as steep in front of the building. But from a stormwater perspective, we don't have any issues, you know, we are, we are sumping all these inlets in the corners of even the, the larger, but a 5% slope is completely, completely fine.
Mr. Phillips?
I agree.
The drainage areas also to these inlets in that 5%, or I guess it's more like 4% are significantly small. So, you know, we're able to break that up as well.
Any other questions? And item number five, we're gonna skip over four, right?
Yes. And then five is the dedication of Parkland, asking for a waiver of the fee in lieu of, so as part of this development, the school is allowing and enhancing the community use of the project. So we're adding a soccer field and we have two large playgrounds. And then also, we're doing walking path upgrades and then upgrades or modifications to the forestry plan. So we're hoping to enhance all the features at the school, so that is why the school is asking for the waiver for that item.
Questions?
And there's gonna be full grading for a soccer field there?
Yes. So we were able to, I mean, there's a stormwater facility under it, so that, that helps, because we did have to flatten out some slopes there. But I will show you-
Where's that gonna be?
So, as you know, the school kind of sits high, and then as we go down, this is just the, the grading plan, so I can turn to layout if I know the plans get a little busy. But that is down in this area, so your parking lot, side of the building, and then you're coming down here, and the soccer field will be down in this area.
Okay.
So that was a, a big addition that we could provide to the school, especially by putting that stormwater underground.
In, in looking at the landscape process, design process, I would hate to see the landscape plan amended in a negative way, because you don't conform to a letter of the law issue around the parking. So what I'm saying is, I, you know, the classroom in the woods, this whole concept, this whole thought process about how you wanna integrate the learning process into the treescape-
Mm-hmm.
-is a pretty novel, unique approach. And I, and I don't think we should letter the law, you guys, because of the parking, I agree with Roger, if, if you're gonna lose that really unique landscape plan because of that-
Right.
-then I don't think we're doing our jobs. So that's what, that's how I feel about these, the parking waivers.
So I understand the whole concept that this is a public use facility, it's for the residents of the township, and I also understand that there potentially could be other security concerns if you opened this up for, you know, large-scale use for the township. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about how this site is going to be enhanced so that the entire township could perhaps benefit from this. I think the foregone conclusion is that, that waiver is going to be granted. We get it. But I think from an education standpoint, some of us have four children in the, in the school district, some of us do not. I'd like to find out how the rest of the township would benefit from the school.
Yeah, and so would you like to hear, we, we do have someone here from Brandywine to talk about the forestry management plan as well, that's gonna enhance the hiking trails. Obviously, Kyle, we can talk about the enhancements to the playgrounds and what that's going to look like. Obviously, the school has its use itself, but however, do you wanna talk about?
I'll offer before we turn over to Brandywine.
I think you can do high level, Mr. Falcone, and then we can get into the meat and potatoes of it-
In January, perhaps.
-at a subsequent meeting. I think that's probably wise.
Sure. So I think as part of this design process, one of the things the district did consider was making sure that they allowed some of the existing amenities, for example, the tennis courts, are, are actively used by many members of the public. If you went after hours or on the weekends, you'd almost always find the tennis courts full, and they're not full of students, they're full of adults from the community that are there playing tennis. So that is one open feature that they're gonna maintain and enhance for public use. The relocation and betterment of the soccer field is also, while it's not necessarily driven for adult use, it is a township-wide amenity that will be used by the soccer club that serves students from all, all schools in the district, as well as general just community schools that are not attending the, the public schools, they participate in Radnor Soccer Club, which David knows very well. And then lastly, and most, I would say most significantly for this project, has been working closely with Brandywine to better the trails and make the woodlands that surround this property a more usable and understandable woodlands. So one of the things we talked about at our last meeting was how we were handling the tree removal and why the number of trees coming down was disproportionate against the ordinance to the plantings. And why we went that route was working with the township's arborist, they felt that we could make these woodlands a more attractive and usable woodlands by making the appropriate plantings at the appropriate scale, and then creating a, a woodlands mitigation plan that could then allow those woodlands to be sustainable and used across the, the learning platform, but generally to the general public to use the trails that walk through them. It's an impressive woodland, it's just an overgrown and kind of tired woodland at this point. So rather than kind of marginalizing this asset and fencing it, the district has decided they're gonna utilize trails so that people can appreciate this. So I think of the amenities that are on site, all three will serve the public, I think the woodlands plan will be the most important and the most utilized.
With respect to, so there's an existing playground on site-
There is.
-obviously in a great state of disrepair. There are two baseball diamonds there, maybe not regulation, but good enough for Little League.
Sure.
Are those remaining?
So we are continuing, what is it, Midget Field is gonna remain, where is that? I'm looking for the plan. We are continuing, we're keeping those areas open, that's correct. They're gonna, Midget Field as it's called now, which-
It's Midget.
-has your two, basically T-ball fields, they'll remain there, they'll be open to Radnor Little League, again. That's correct, yeah. So when you come in, it's off to the right appropriate-
But it has ADA access, I think is the big-
And, and I will say, as, as for the, the playgrounds, I mean, they are primarily used for school students during the day. Obviously, that's a safety concern, but they will be enhanced playgrounds as well.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Mr. Phillips, one more chance? All right. Mr. Drummond, I know this wasn't your, your item tonight, but-
Hey, no comments tonight.
All right. Mr. Norsini has left us. I'd like to hear- All right. Mr. Norsini has left us. Like to hear from the public if the public would like to offer anything. Please come up. State your name, address, whatnot.
Kate Burke. I live on South Roberts Road, which comes just off of Sproul, and it's a short cut-through piece of road between Sproul and Darby Paoli, and love I than. We lived there for 25 years now, and our two children, adult children now, went to I than. It's just a great, I'm happy to hear all of what you're trying to maintain, you know, the beauty of the property. We walk there all the time, still do. But I have one question, and I'm not sure if that was addressed or even shown in your plans. I went to one of the early meetings that was held at I than, and there was discussion of a possible second access to the property, and they talked about the possibility of it coming, I guess, it would be directly across from the entrance to South Roberts Road, which would create a horrible traffic issue for our little cut-through street. I mean, we would become-
Yeah, we removed that from the plan.
It's private.
Oh, okay, good, good. We, we'd become prisoners in our homes. We already are, like, during certain time periods. Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we are trying to, we're keeping and trying to maintain the existing access-
Okay.
Point, and that will be it.
Okay, all right, good, good. I didn't see it on a plan, and I hadn't been to another meeting.
Love a Clyde.
Still on Clyde, okay.
Yeah, we're just keeping Clyde.
Okay, okay. Okay, because that would take, yeah, that would be- Okay, okay. Correct, yes. Yeah, it's a narrow, narrow street, which is cut through. Okay, good. I love the plan idea, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Falcone, I think we're going to do what we promised we'll do. We'll table you until next time.
Thank you, Ms. Furman, appreciate that.
Our next meeting is January 7th. Are you anticipating you'll be back then, or?
That's the goal. We're hoping to be back with, with more stuff, but we'll see.
I know Mr. Golis probably has another crack at this shade tree, but that being said, let's vote to table, even though we don't have to. Application 212-981, Radnor Township School District, I than Elementary School, like to make a motion to table. Can I get a second? Second by Kunda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all, and we're adjourned.
So, we have one more public comment, right?
I, I think we're done with public comment, but-
So, I just checked the agenda. If I could just say one more thing, kind of, now that we're done?
Yeah, by all means.
Yeah, so, I wanted to speak to Mr. Golis's service to the township. So, I've been doing this 20 years, right? My very first meeting was in front of the Radnor Township Planning Commission when I first came out of law school. I'm obviously partial to Radnor Service. My father was on this board for a long time, served on the zoning hearing board. I know so many of these folks personally, so many of you personally. And I just have to say, Matt has done just a terrific job. My father and I still talk about how much he enjoyed serving with Matt, and that is because Matt is a good and decent man who is approachable, honest, who gives very sincere feedback to applicants. As an attorney, I can tell you, Matt, it is, it is greatly appreciated to appear in front of a board that will give you such, such candid review, and you are approachable, and the, the township has, I'm sure all of you would agree, we're grateful for your service. I know my father, I was texting with him, he is grateful for your service, and I'll miss getting the opportunity to appear in front of you. I look forward to continuing to appear in front of all of you, but thank you for all you've done, and I'm grateful to have had the chance to, to grow up in front of you in some respects.
Appreciate you, I really do.
Thank you, Mr. Falcone, and I think the sentiment is definitely joined by everybody else on the panel.
You don't have to get them all in now.
All right. Thank you all. We're adjourned. Good evening.